Good afternoon. Now, let's bring the regular afternoon meeting of council to order. The first item is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please?
No move.
Counselor Whitmarsh, second by Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And adoption of minutes, regular afternoon council meeting of November the 19th. Counselor Ferguson moves it. Seconder, Counselor Arnison, any errors or missions? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion resolved and special closed. Counselor Whitmarsh, second by Counselor Kuntz. And I'm going to add a personnel. Okay, anything else? Counselor Ferguson?
On table, I don't see your worship.
And the on table, yeah, thank you. With that, all those in favor, pose carried. Thank you. All right, good afternoon. Now, we'll reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council. And the next item is delegations. And we have Mr. Kevin Mayer of Segra International Corporation here to delegate to council. And welcome here. And just for your information, there's a timer. I'll set it for five minutes and just provide your name and address to the clerk for the record. Thank you. Oh, hang on, I'll get your mic on. There we go. It really picks up well. You don't need to lean into it.
No leaning forward.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kevin Mayer. I actually live just over in Willoughby, a few blocks away, 7169 208A Street. Thank you for all, thank you all for having us here. We really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to providing you with a little bit of information about my company, our team here, what we do, and what we're really hoping to do in the township of Langley. So, what do we do? We do what's called plant tissue culture. So, if you're not aware of what that means, every strawberry or blueberry or banana you've basically had in the last 15 years was actually produced in a plant tissue laboratory before it went out to the plant nurseries and the farmers who grow them out to sell them. So, Driscoll Strawberries, really great example of a massive company that does nothing but actually plant tissue culture. They provide strawberry starts, for example, for every major strawberry, or a third of the world's strawberry production. So, what that means and what this technique does is we basically take cuttings from plants, sterilize them to remove bacterial, fungal, or viral contaminants, and then in a laboratory setting, we can mass produce those plants, you know, as clones for growers and nurseries. So, somebody somewhere has bred a really great plant that either has a distinctive flavor, taste, or whatever, and then plant tissue culture labs sort of function as the manufacturers of those plants to mass produce them on scale for commercial and industrial agricultural crops. So, our team has actually been operating in the Langley area for over 15 years, 15 years, actually, at, through JRT Nurseries, which is one of the large plant tissue culture labs here in Alder Grove, actually. And really, probably, a lot of the blueberries in the Lower Main Line are produced there before they go out to all the farmers. And what we've done more recently is create this company, Segra, to actually target the cannabis industry, the forthcoming sort of newly regulated cannabis industry. But for us, you know, it's just another plant. We, you know, Dr. Zabaid, who is our chief tissue culture specialist, he's perfected the industrial production of over 500 different plant species, and this just presents a really interesting new opportunity for us. So, really, this allows growers to rapidly create a large number of plants, baby plants, essentially, in a very small controlled environment. And the term we use for this is micropropagation. So, typically, what a lot of growers are doing for cannabis, for example, is they do vegetative propagation. And this just means that they maintain these large mother plants that they take cuttings from to produce baby plants. There's a lot of problems with that, and tissue culture solves a lot of those problems. So, as people and companies are scaling up, they're really looking for technology companies like us that can provide support for them to improve their operations. So, you know, this has largely become the gold standard for not just mass production of baby plants, but also for shipping plants around the world. So, what we're here for and to discuss with you, obviously, is this zoning proposal that we're planning to bring forward, our development application permit for a zoning text amendment to allow us to operate within a specific site in the Gloucester area in an existing industrial space, where we believe our needs are best met, as well as that of the communities, by, you know, being within an industrial area for manufacturing type work. So, we'll be bringing that application shortly, probably in the next two weeks, for council's review, presumably in the new year. So, most of our team live here, myself included, and our goal really is to be able to work here as well. Right now, the companies that we work with are largely based in Ontario and Quebec, but we are developing our own facility here in B.C. so that we can basically bring all of that work here and scale up and support a lot of different companies. You know, we have a really great existing labor pool in the Langley area for plant tissue culture with the two large existing laboratories that are already here. You know, these nurseries, not always easy to find a lot of people with that background, but they can be trained. But really, these represent a great workplace because these are higher tech, you know, skilled jobs, full-time, non-seasonal type work. So, obviously, one of the key, one of the, you know, most common things that people are concerned about regarding any cannabis business is the smell. And one very fascinating and, I think, advantage of our business is that we don't have that problem. We, you know, we only produce tiny baby plants in sterile test tubes and jars that don't smell. So, juvenile plants actually don't even produce any of the components that you need to produce the cannabis smell, and we don't produce any adult mature plants, or any final product, or anything of that nature. We're only producing the very small baby plants. You know, our final product is about the size of a bean sprout, and then those are just shipped in sort of sealed containers to, out to other licensed producers in the, you know, throughout Canada, or in the world potentially, as other, you know, as other countries become regulated and come online. So, you know, as far as impact goes with various cannabis businesses, I can say we're, you know, a very low-impact business. This is actually what a laboratory looks like, very clean facility, much more like a computer chip manufacturing facility, with lots of rows of shelving, with lots and lots of containers of baby plants. So, you know, really, the major benefit to the community, we're really, you know, very proud of, is the fact that we would be bringing a lot of great jobs here. You know, and these would be diverse, full-time jobs, all living wage or higher, non-seasonal, you know, tissue culture technicians that we can train, supervisors, logistics QA, people on the corporate side, and we would, you know, we were confident that we would be hiring at least 45 to 60 people within the first year of our operations, and scaling up to, I believe, about 160 people within three years, three to four years. You know, we have a lot of traction in the industry right now. We're growing, and we're really hoping to grow here. You know, we also don't have some of the water usages of a traditional egg business. Our waste is minimal. It's much more akin to a small restaurant, in fact, than a agricultural business. You know, and we don't produce, as I mentioned, any of the final product that we store on site. So, you know, in terms of security, or concerns, or diversion, we're about the lowest-impact business in the cannabis industry you could expect. So, this is our team, and I just want to thank you for your time and answer any questions you might have about our company. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ferguson?
Dr. Mayer, thank you for coming. I guess your PhD is probably to do with agriculture in this particular field?
Strangely, no, actually. I'm a biochemist and microbiologist by trade, so our company actually has a lab in Richmond, just a genetics lab, that's developing some assays, DNA-based assays for testing.
I don't want, I don't want an lecture.
But somehow, somehow.
Way over my head already. I want to ask the specific question, you know, number one, you've answered it with a number of people. As, as, we're in times of change here in the world, in Canada, are you restricted by any federal regulations by bringing in cannabis and this particular product?
Yes. So, there's actually four types of cultivation licenses under the new federal regime. One is for cultivation, one is for nursery, so we would actually be a nursery, which doesn't allow you to actually produce the mature flowering plants and make the final product. So, we would actually be restricted to a nursery license, unlike a large greenhouse that's actually doing the mature plant production. Then there's also processing for the companies doing extraction, as well as industrial hemp for just hemp growers.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I'm excited about the job opportunities. That'll be great. Now, will you be able to find enough qualified people in the area, or are you going to have to bring people in to be the technicians?
So, in this area, we are very fortunate in that there is a large existing labor pool for this type of work, with, as I mentioned, there's two large labs that are already employing, I would say, well over 50 people each in this area. So, you know, there's a huge portion of that labor that we can tap into. Of course, we'll have to train people and find new technicians, and that can be done. But I don't foresee, because it's, you know, the work isn't seasonal, it's full-time, and if we're offering fair wages, I really don't see any challenge to bring in anyone, really, who's capable of being trained for that work as well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison?
Yes, thank you very much for coming today. I think it's great you've shown us some pictures. It would be fascinating at some point in the future, should this go forward, to maybe take a little review. Council can always get on a bus and do a tour. I'm just curious about the retrofitting of an existing building for this purpose. Is that fairly substantial from what you need to do if you have an existing building?
Not really. I mean, in the sense, no more than, I would say, than a small medical testing lab or something similar. Really, all we need to do within an existing industrial building is add some walls and a roof, and then basically partition it for the rooms that we need. Most of the specialization from our type of work comes from the equipment that we put into the space, not actually the infrastructure changes. It's pretty much just drywall and, you know, slightly better HVAC system, just to move air to lots of different rooms as opposed to one open space, and then everything else is really just the lab equipment that we bring in for the work.
And just out of curiosity, so, there is no sense at the level that you're doing it, because they're very small tissue cultures, tiny plants. So, just the biohazard or anything that you have to do as special precautions, there's no idea of, you know, all those security things that you'd have to do otherwise, or that's not an issue when they're so small?
It's a non-issue for us, because even if somebody were to, I'll say, swipe a tiny baby plant, it would die, you know, really, because it takes a special process even to receive that plant and take it through a few more stages before it's even growable.
Okay.
So, we call it very much non-abusable because, or divertible, just because it's even, even, even as a, compared to other live mature plants, it couldn't be just put in the ground and grow by any.
It's fragile at that point, basically.
It's very fragile, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Kuntz?
Yes, thanks for coming. I just had one question. Will you be just growing cannabis, or will, can you grow other things there as well? And do you have any plans to do that?
Really good question. You know, for us, yes, we do plan to grow other things. You know, what those are right now, it's hard to say, because what we're really trying to do is leverage cannabis and the margins that come with cannabis right now to improve the technology as a whole. So, for example, Dr. Zabaid, who runs our operation, has a number of different academic partnerships with groups that are trying to improve automation and higher-level technologies for just tissue culture as a whole, things we can apply to blueberries and to, you know, rhododendrum and ornamental plants. But, you know, right now, you'll never be able to get investment for that type of infrastructure and technology development on the margins that you get from, say, blueberries or ornamental plants. So, we see it as an opportunity where we can focus on higher-value crops, whatever they may be, medicinal plants, food crops, ornamentals, just as we, as we grow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. No further questions from council. So, thank you very much for your presentation. Looks like an exciting business. Look forward to considering your application.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on to reports to council, and F1 is the flag-raising policy. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Arnison, second by Counselor Whitmarsh, discussion on F1. Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I had a couple, a couple of suggestions on this. Could we eliminate the time limit for a sitting mayor? No, sorry, not a sitting mayor, a previous mayor. I looked up the city of Langley's policy around this, and they didn't have a time restriction or a time minimum for a previous mayor. And to me, that's, actually, the way it's written here, the 10 years would prevent flying the flag for Kurt Alberts and our previous two mayors that I could think of. I don't think that's our intent, so I wonder if we could just eliminate that. Do I need to make a motion for that, or how do we, how do you want to process some of these minor changes?
Amendment?
Your worship, it might be simple, but if they're relatively minor changes, to get the list and move one motion, depends upon if they're contentious.
Yeah, I had also wanted to raise the fact that, you know, a free person or someone that's been awarded the Medal of Freedom in the municipality could also be given this honor. Would that be appropriate or not? Rest of council, of course, consider that. It's just a suggestion. And also, we didn't have a category for CIOs that served for 25 years or more as well, so I didn't know if you wanted to consider that, potential amendment.
That offer's been made several times already. Thank you so much.
You give them their own flagpole.
However, we don't want to do that, but I think my main consideration is the fact that our previous three mayors wouldn't qualify under this written policy.
And I wouldn't either, if I don't make it to the end.
You'll make it. You qualify.
So, yeah, see, there's two people that read that policy. I brought that same one, same point up, but interesting. So, a motion to amend, I think, if you want to make a motion for those points that you raised, then.
Yeah, I think it's the freedom recipients. I think there's only one at the moment, but all future ones, so that would be Fred Pepin wouldn't qualify for this, and then, of course, the mayors removing the 10 years on the previous mayor.
Okay, so that's been moved. Is there a second, or Counselor Whitmarsh seconds? Discussion on the amendment? I'll call a question on the amendment. Carries unanimously. And so, the motion as amended. And any further discussion on that? See none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously? I don't know, I beat you, I beat you to it, unless you're opposed. All right, that's passed, so now we'll move on to F2, financial report update. Could I have a motion, please?
No move.
Counselor Davis, seconder. Counselor Ferguson, discussion on the financial report. See none? Oh, Counselor Arnison?
Slow today.
There we go.
Yes, thank you, worship. I believe to Mr. Backham and then through your worship. I'm looking at this, and I noted that, I think it's on page four, well, actually, no, it's probably on the first page. Anyways, it seems to be a bit of a trend and a slowdown for construction values and permits until September of this year, which is the timeframe that's been captured there. And so, I'm wondering, just generally speaking, does this seem to be an overall trend? It's what I've heard anecdotally, that there seems to be a bit of a slowdown, or do staff feel this could be a potential market correction just based on this snapshot that we have? Thank you.
I think what's evident is that the activity is decreasing. Having said that, though, the decrease is equivalent to the 2015, 2016 timeframe so far. It may continue to decrease next year, but our planning is assuming more of a traditional model of 2015, 16, as opposed to the 17 spike you're referring to. So, how far it goes, if we could predict that, we wouldn't have any financial issues for sure.
Counselor Davis?
Hi, thank you. I ask this question all the time, maybe through the mayor, to the remediation former municipal site hall. We're going to spend $38,000. Why does that keep coming up?
So, the former up in, up in Murrayville, so remediation of that?
I think, I think from the transaction, there was, there was a small element of work still to be done, I believe. And again, I don't believe the work is physical. I think it's, we'll call in the papers, so the certificates of it and processing it to make sure we have the evidence of the certificate of compliance. I believe this year that now has been completed, and that brings some closure to it, and I think that should be the last we should be seeing of it, we hope.
Okay. The other thing, page 23, I just noticed that we have $130,000 for Glen Valley, Forshore, and then the Marina Park boat launch. Is that, is that connected to each other?
What I would say is that those funds primarily, I think, are for planning and studying, especially for the Marina Forshore, and the other one was the Glen Valley, sorry, was it the first you mentioned?
Glen Valley Forshore. So, is that dyking?
I think that's going to be, again, not physical work, but planning work for some dyking.
Okay, because we do also have $50,000 for the motorized vehicle launch.
Right.
And I guess that's probably connected.
So, Marina Park, in its current status, needs some maintenance, some of the dikes need some revamping, if you will. They're different projects, but they're, I guess, they're connected by the fact that they're on the water. There's also opportunities to look at other places for launches that I think is being studied.
Okay, because I noticed on page 29, we have dyking at 1.497, a million and a half dollars, and the dyking in West Langley for 335,000. That's on the Fraser?
That would be on the Fraser, or its tributaries, I guess, depending on the mouth of some of the creeks. My comment was, though, some of those amounts are actually budget envelopes, because some of the work does require cumulative years before it can be done, and I think that might be the larger one that you're referring to.
Okay. The last, maybe the last one, is the railroad crossing safeties improvements. We've got just about $4 million. Then we also have an intersection. So, is that $4 million, what's, okay, I'll just, what's that for? Now, I'll just continue. It says here, intersection and rail crossing improvements, Glover and Mavis. Then we have rail safety improvement for the CN. Then we have rail safety improvements for the Southern Rail. Is that all together?
They're itemized as being separate projects, because I think they originated at separate times. So, for example, Glover and Mavis is a project that goes back to the development of Bedford Landing. When it was done, there was some carryforward money from the developer and then from ourselves to improve the Glover and Mavis intersection. Likewise, the other project you mentioned for $4 million, that's our overall rail safety initiative, that's been mandated by the federal government, where we've actually had to go through a fairly lengthy process to upgrade all of our crossings to a certain standard, so that would come later in time. And the other project, I think, was, is somewhere in the middle. I can't recall exactly where that one was.
The Southern Rail.
Southern Rail, yeah.
So, so, I guess, wouldn't those other, wouldn't the Glover and Mavis and CN and the Southern Rail, wouldn't, wouldn't that be, couldn't we get that all under the $4 million, or put that under the safety initiative plan that's coming up, because that spiked from the federal government?
Unfortunately, no, because those projects actually were well before the request and the program was put into place. So, because they're in this budget, they appear to start at the same time. They go back a number of years, and then what's called a carryforwards or additional money for existing projects, so as a consequence, have to be treated differently because of the time they originated.
Okay, and the last thing I couldn't find in here was 72nd, and we're walls, places, we put the new bridge in, and it's just about ready to open. Where, that would've been over $1 million. Why didn't I, why wouldn't that be still in here? I know it's just about done, but it would, it would be in this calendar year. Maybe I missed it.
I'd have to defer to Karen on that. I believe the history of that one was that it may have been started in the 2016, 17 budget year, so it may have actually been a carryforward, so it might appear in a different location. Karen?
Sometimes the names do not coincide neatly with, with how we know of the project, but I can look into that, Counselor Davis, for you and, and get that information for you.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if it was, we had to build a new bridge, but we had to lift, we had to lift the road up. Anyway, okay.
Raise the road at Salmon River, that one?
Yeah.
It's about, one, two, three, four, five, seven from the top.
Well, there it is, right there. Okay, I missed it, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. You don't have to, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes, just a question through your worship to Mr. Backham. The, at the, near the end of this document, we have the year-to-date, third-quarter capital expenditure statements, and on there, there's Schedule B, I think it's page 14, that I have 14 on the electronic here. And, and so, my question on that is, we have a number of items that have a budgeted item, it says Budget 2018, and then it has actuals, and the actuals up to this point are significantly lower than the actual, than the budget, and it shows remaining budget, 75 and 80 percent, some of them even as high as 90 percent. Just to remind me, is that because there are some, a number of significant projects that we were anticipating, and so we've set money aside in anticipation of some larger capital projects, and for whatever reason, they haven't started yet, or we haven't completed them, or we haven't begun to work on them, and so we're sitting at, you know, a, a large percentage of that capital budget is still remaining, even though there's only three months or from this document left in the year?
I think all those comments are generally correct. By that, I mean that what you'll see is that some of the projects have a later start date for the consultant design. That could delay the start date. Others, then, would actually start later in the year, may, and may need to carry over to the subsequent year, so that could also be a factor. And some of them as well would simply be the, the timing of the construction, or more importantly, the timing of the billing for that construction, because as you'll notice, this is, as, to September 30th, the work may have been commencing October the 1st, for example. In that case, there could be sizable construction still happening in the final quarter, especially as regards to the fisheries windows. And when we're working around the fisheries windows, sometimes those are greatly compressed to work, so depending upon the projects and the impact they have, it may be due to third-party factors.
Okay, so the amount that's set in the budget, then, would carry over potentially into a subsequent budget year, because the project would, could have been delayed or started a later time, or it could be over a period of budget years?
Or it may have been, they may simply be billing at a later time, depending on the nature of the project itself.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Ferguson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. If I may, through the chair again, to the staff. I think, you know, that we're going to be going over the budget soon, and it would be helpful if there were a little bit of a review of the past budget, and I'm sure you'll do that anyway. I did want to just kind of refer to page 16 so far, and also, I know that Counselor Whitmarsh, I think you referred to page 14 with the printed page, but I guess back to six, that's the airport, and I guess, I'm not sure if it's IT Capital's airport or not, it's Corporate Administration, so it's 2.59, almost 2.6 million for IT Capital. That, that can't be the airport, if I may.
No, that's correct. That's actually the overall IT Capital budget. That's just sharing the same page, not the same accounts.
Now, is that because, I guess you'll itemize that as we go on, that's because we've introduced some new technology or something, if I may?
The purpose of the grouping is it fits under the Corporate Administration Department Division, and the technology actually relates to the technology review, but also the provision of some, I guess, conduit cabling, if you want to call it that, fiber optics, fiber-optic cables between various facilities. So, we've had budgets for those going forward, so when you combine both the fiber optics nature of it and as well the capital requirements to maintain not only the independent workstations, but the servers, it becomes a bit of a significant amount.
Okay, and I imagine that you're going to be going over this budget, but I did want to ask you a kind of a question regarding services that's in new areas. You've got a whole list of services for water, obviously, storm waters, management, probably sewer projects and, and others. They, as we open up new areas, you can see there's probably a lot of demand for those type of services, and they're ongoing. At what point in time do, do we draw the line between what's our demand and what's our requirement versus that of the developing community?
Generally speaking, the proposition is that the works and expenses remain under what we'll call warranty for the purposes of, for the period of one year. After that, it reverts to the township, so at that point, we know that the infrastructure is in fairly decent shape, and at that point, then, we'll have to take over the maintenance of it. Because of our programs that we have in place, to the extent that we'll have be adding extra infrastructure, we'll be adding some base line adjustments to include the cost of maintaining that infrastructure, so the system becomes fairly, fairly automatic in some areas, so that where there has been extensions or expansions, we have them contribute the capital, that would be the cost of the asset, they maintain it for one year, and then the operating costs for that thereafter are built into the budget automatically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no further discussion, so I'm going to call a question on F2. And carries unanimously. And move on to other business. Counselor Richter?
Thank you. You've had the motion for a week, so I'll just read the therefore be it resolved, that the council priorities committee be dissolved as it is no longer needed, ISO move.
A seconder? Counselor Davis seconds. Discussion? Counselor Long?
I have to hold back. I prefer to speak at the end, because, anyway, it doesn't matter now, but good grief, it says that they're no longer needed. I don't know how we can come to that conclusion, your worship, that their meeting times are always needed, so the CPCs are called on a need-to basis, my understanding is, at always needed, so the CPCs are called on a need-to basis, my understanding is, at the direction of council. Also, in the whereas's, I can't possibly agree with them, where it says that there's some redundancy here, and that they are not open public meetings, which they are. CPCs are open to the public. And no decision can be made at a CPC that doesn't come to council. So that's, it gets a double, a double hit. It gets a discussion at CPC, and then it gets a hit again at, at the council table. Now, I'm not trying to say we must have meetings for the sake of meetings, but I can't, I can't see that there'd be a need right now to scrap them, especially when today we have six notices of motion on the, on the agenda. Perhaps they should be referred to CPCs, but, so your worship, I, I just don't agree with the wording, because it, it says that they're no longer needed. Well, I don't think you can say that. It says that they're not open in public meetings, which they are, so I would, let's just leave it. And as I say, they're called at the, at the call of the council, so if there's no need for them, they won't be happening. So it's automatic.
You, Council Davis?
Maybe just a question through Mayor Fros to Mr. Backham. It seems sometimes to me, in my two terms now, if all of a sudden, oh, it goes to CPP, I think, oh, it's gone. And, and I know, that's my opinion, but I'm just, I don't always see them come back to, to run them, to have the issues, how many issues come forward? Is there any, is there any issues there that are still there from four or five years ago? Like, I, no, they're, they all seem, sorry?
We are now current with the CPC items. As you may recall, for a matter to go to, the council priorities committee, it must be referred by the council. The mayor's only role was to set the timing of the meeting in terms of what was taking place. I think the challenge you're referring to is that we had a number of issues referred to council priorities committee in a very short period of time, in a year or so. So as a consequence, I recall at one point, there was a nine- or a ten-month lag period from the referral to when it could appear. The council priorities committee meeting would occur typically on one of the Mondays of the month, sometimes when there's no council meeting, sometimes when there was a council meeting, to make sure we could get proper attendance, with the result that if you did two items per meeting, which would be a bit, would be a bit, I guess, adventuresome, once you have ten or twelve items there on your list, it takes five to six months to actually get back to that item. I think what we've learned from the process is that it can work effectively as long as the issues are of a nature and concern that they warrant and merit further debate. I think I've heard from some council members that sometimes the referrals are more convenient than for interest, and that can complicate matters. But that unfortunately is something the council has to regulate in terms of whether the item under discussion merits referral to CPC, or whether it can be dealt with at the council table.
So, just a question, and do you, do you think, do you like them? Do, does it, does it able to you to bring them and have, give a bit of freedom?
He doesn't come.
No, 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 no. No, I, I don't care if he come or not, but it, like, is it, is it a tool that we can, staff then can take it and say, and, and work with it, and give them a bit of time to prepare for the presentations? Is it something that you think that, yeah, I guess it's, I'm asking you the question, but I maybe shouldn't be?
But perhaps a higher view, council priorities committee is really a committee of the whole. So you may have heard that language from council in previous eras. Many councils used to have continuous committees of the wholes. In fact, they would actually do a committee of the whole in the afternoon, then replay the whole meeting in the evening. That was not a very, a very efficient use of time, because the, the items can get backed up. The use of committee of the whole can be effective, from staff's perspective, if it provides the time to educate or enlighten council on some complex issues. But then, remember, the triggering mechanism is it has to be referred by council to the committee itself. So it's really important for council to reflect upon the nature of the issues they're referring and reflecting upon, because if they, if they simply refer them and there isn't a holistic interest of the council in the topic, it's not an efficient use of time. So as long as the system is working, it can be very productive. But if council feels that issues that are not necessarily worthy of being given the additional time, then that's not an efficient use of the meeting itself. And of course, to Council Long's point, I certainly cherish all the time we can spend in meetings together, especially with councilors Long and Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council Arneson?
Thank you, worship. It's hard to follow up on that. Through your worship, to staff, I guess it's more of a comment, actually. When I looked at this and I thought about this, having had just one term's experience, I really feel that it's rather a helpful tool that we have. I don't think it is really supplanted, from my perspective, of the fact that we now have facilitated conversations and a work plan. I think about all the emerging issues that come up during the year, and it gives an opportunity, as Mr. Backham has referenced, when we have a topic that comes up, it may be that just one counselor has that information, it might be a couple. But I think it's a really good tool that we can help to have an understanding. So if it is the will of council to bring it forward to a meeting, it allows for presentation. So my most recent example is, I went to a housing affordability workshop. And what I thought was, well, let's find somebody who could come here, and if council would like to hear more, we can use a CPC meeting as a way to discern more about the topic. So question and answer, you know, the format of an hour, I think, is not too much, it's not onerous. And I also think that it's very helpful to find out more about these topics, because it can be challenging to get everybody on the same page. So if we're agreeable to that, but I certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't get rid of this opportunity to have more, I call them fulsome discussions, on any given topic.
You, Council Richter?
Yeah. Well, I think the, the new process with the priority planning sessions, the facilitated ones, allows council to get a lot of issues out on the table, to prioritize those issues, and then, you know, deal with the top five and move more up into the top five as, as they leave the top five. I, I'm quite happy with that process, and particularly appreciate being able to review the priorities annually, which we appear to have done over the last term, and I'm hopeful that that practice will continue again in this term. My concern with council priorities is that, the council priorities committee, is that I, I really don't think it's needed in the way it used to be needed any longer, because we, we are now doing council priorities at the beginning of every term. We didn't, we didn't used to do that when these, when these first came in. And now I'm thinking that it is somewhat redundant, because we still have other mechanisms open to us. If a counselor has an idea that they would like to get more information from staff on, there's nothing prohibiting that counselor from phrasing the motion to request a staff presentation at a subsequent council meeting. And I, I think keeping discussions in the context of a council meeting is better for the public, because they can tune in through live streaming. We don't livestream the CPC meetings. And we can still learn more about topics by using, by using the mechanisms of staff presentations. The other concern that I've had, particularly with the transition that the council's gone through in the last two terms, is that we're down to fewer meetings per month than we used to have, which is fine, I mean, we're being more efficient with our time. But when we tack on a CPC meeting before an afternoon meeting, before a closed meeting, before an evening meeting, before a public hearing, we often end up having very long council meeting days, starting sometimes at noon or one o'clock, and maybe even going through till midnight or one o'clock. And I question the effectiveness of our decision-making when we have very, very long council meetings. So I'm, I think we should just try to see if we can live without it for a while. If, if it turns out we can't, we can always reinstate it.
You, Council Woodward?
Yeah, my issue's been somewhat similar with CPC is, you know, I've sort of sat in the audience for a fair number of years, and what I observed was something very similar to what Counselor Davis has alluded to, that what I used to say was CPC is where good ideas go to die. And I do personally feel that way. I think that, especially when you're into a nine-month backlog and some of that, that why not just start the afternoon meeting a little bit earlier, if there's going to be a discussion on a more in-depth item that gets deferred? And do it at an afternoon meeting that's recorded, and has a agenda that people are used to, and they download, and it's archived and viewable by the public forever. CPC meetings, the discussions, you know, if an issue is sent off to CPC and there's a great discussion, it's not currently recorded. It's held around one o'clock in the afternoon on a Monday, and I don't find that particularly transparent, or a public meeting, as Counselor Long referred to that. That's just not my definition of a, of a public meeting. So for me, I don't see why we need a committee structure when we can just move these items to the afternoon meeting, and potentially, if we're expecting a longer discussion, start the afternoon meeting slightly earlier, get them on the agenda, get them dealt with, and move on, rather than waiting six months to come back, and everybody's like, what's that again? So to me, I, I do feel it's somewhat redundant to an afternoon meeting structure.
Thank you. Council Ferguson?
Yeah, I just got caught off-guard, is good ideas to die. I remember that these CPC used to call the planning session of council, where I guess former mayors, I guess, I remember Mayor Alberts would always, being a former planner himself, talk about zoning and rezoning projects, talked about sometimes agenda items, talked about opening up new areas, talked about challenges within the regional district, challenges within the province, things regarding the hospital, things regarding, I don't know if it's called Fraser Health then, but we had a whole myriad of, we thought were very important things, and I think he decided, instead of calling it a, a planning session, we prioritize, prioritize some of these things and, and get some things on the table. I remember, and something that maybe people don't remember, is something regarding full-time firefighters was discussed at one time. I imagine we've got it four halls now. But I want, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but, you know, a, a meeting is only as good as the items presented on the agenda, and you can quote me at that. And, you know, perhaps we could meet less, or we can put some really good quality items, items that don't die, and items that are, I believe, important, perhaps to the township and not to others. And we can use this, these meetings for some real value. But, you know, if, if we don't put something of some substance in these meetings, you're right, there's, there's not any value in it. Certainly, if we can take, put the priority back in the CPC, it certainly would be something that I can support. Thank you.
You, Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I really appreciate the different ideas that people have given around this, and certainly we want our meetings to be effective and not waste anyone's time, including those members of the public that come. It, it feels to me that, you know, that the council priorities meetings that we've had, I, I felt them to be quite a helpful thing. I found that the, the format in which those meetings are run, the opportunity to engage the topic is different than what we have in a normal afternoon meeting. And so I do appreciate that we could include some of these things in a normal afternoon meeting, but then it feels to me like it's a bit more of just simply a report, as opposed to a, an opportunity for council discussion. And, you know, I think that's one of the things that since, since I've been involved in council, that I, I would like us to have more opportunities for good discussion around council, and certainly we can have that, that discussion in the public, public domain, no, no issue there. And so to me, council priorities meetings, maybe they could have a different name, I don't know if, now that we have priority sessions, maybe it's confusing, but they are, to me, good opportunities for good discussion that don't follow the same protocols as we might have in a normal meeting. And so because of that, I, I'd like to keep them, and just make sure that we're discussing important topics, and, and allow a bit of freedom in discussion, and I think it could be really useful for us as a council.
Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, I mean, I think those are great points as well. I mean, CPC is a committee, it's not a council meeting, and so, you know, there's different variations of the discussion that can occur there, and it can be more of a conversation. You know, potentially, it is possible to keep these things at the front of mind, they don't go to CPC and disappear for six months. But maybe there's a possibility to look at a different format, where items on the afternoon agenda would allow us to speak more than twice, potentially, and it doesn't turn into this report-style debate vote format, that, that, you know, the big concern with CPC, you know, I don't know if it's necessarily irrelevant, I haven't been around long enough, I don't know, you know, what was happening ten years ago, I don't know why it was created. But the way I see it being used now by some is that that's where you get ideas to go, where they're not recorded, and the public's really not going to attend a 12:00 PM meeting. And if, maybe if those concerns can be addressed, then maybe CPC can stay. But I don't see why we can't have CPC-style debate for a specific item on an afternoon agenda.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, now, it'll be my turn now. So rather than referring this to a CPC meeting, I think I'll discuss it right now. I've been waiting to give that line. I see value in it, and I think this has been great discussion, and I think it's really important. I think this discussion highlights the fact that when we do send items to a committee meeting, where we want to have a more fulsome discussion, that we make sure those items are worthy of that discussion. And I think there's no problem with sending things there, having a good discussion, getting all of the facts, and that gives council more clarity, so when they come back, that there may or may not be referral back to, back to the full council, but we've had a, a more open discussion. And I wouldn't say they go to die, but we may learn that that item, whatever it is, doesn't go any further. But we've had that chance to, to unpack it, and we've had that chance to discuss it. But there's also many items that have gone to CPC, where they have come back, and, and we've had good chances, and one of it would be discussing this very thing at a procedural bylaw review, where we have a lot of different items, council has lots of ideas, and we can have that in a more open committee meeting, and, and go back to council. Council, there's a reason that council is a little bit more formal, we have a procedural bylaw, and to open that up, that we could speak as many times as you want, or as long as you want, makes our meetings a lot more inefficient. Whereas a CPC meeting, or whatever you want to call it, a meeting of the whole, we have that chance to have that open discussion. One meeting of the whole that we have, I think fairly regularly, and just correct me if I'm wrong with Sinclair, is the budget. The budget is in that format, and I think the budget is extremely important, that we have a good fulsome discussion, that it's not just in the restricted environment that we sometimes find ourselves in a council meeting. And the budget comes through to CPC, and we have a committee, we discuss all the, all the wishes and needs and desires of what council wants, and what the residents wants, and we come back with something that we can refer back to council and have further discussion. But I, I see the value of it. The fact is, it's in our committee bylaw, we would have to have that bylaw come back and have, have that adjusted. If we never use it again, it doesn't mean it has to go away, but there may be a time that we want to use it. So I think it's just us being more vigilant, and making sure that when we do send things to committee, that they have value, and that we're going to get value back, whether it goes there to die, or it goes there and comes back to council with some, with some good referral advice, I think that's valuable. So, so for that, I won't support this, but it, I think it means we have to be vigilant, if that's the wish of council, and what goes to CPC. Council Richter?
Yeah, well, I guess the question then is, as you've said, we have to be vigilant about what goes to CPC. And I think we should still have the option, because I find a lot of the CPC meetings are basically just staff presentations. So why not just do them in the council meeting? But if we have the option to, in a motion, refer something to a staff presentation in a council meeting, I think that that's a, a good thing for us to use as well, because I agree, there's no point in having a meeting if it's not going to be, be productive.
I agree. There are lots of times we get staff presentations, so I agree with that. I see no further discussion, so I'm going to call the question on, I one. And the motion fails with Council Ferguson, Council Whitmarsh, Council Koontz, Mayor Fros, Council Arneson, Council Long, Council Davis. Opposed? Is there any other business?
Oh, yes.
Okay, push the buttons. Okay. Council Richter?
I noted in the items distributed today, item number fifty-eight, there's going to be an adjustment in solid waste collection areas, and I'm just wondering through you to Mr. Backham, if he could just outline exactly why this is happening, and also, will we be putting something in the paper? It says that they're going to be using social media updates, which is wonderful, but there's still a lot of residents that, that read the township page in the newspapers.
Backham?
Thank you, worship, in reverse order. As to the publication, yes, that's, that's correct, we'd be actually doing some broader publication of it. As to the purpose behind it, I think it was primarily trying to coordinate the routes and some efficiencies we can try to, to improve upon. Mr. Seifi?
Your worship is typically based on a request from residents, so this was prompted by a resident request. And what staff typically does is consult with a service provider and determine if it's feasible. And if it is feasible, then we implement it.
Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, it would be appropriate if I could get just a memo in the next distribution as to why the logic is that CPC is not recorded for the public, so if we can at least potentially get a rationale for why that's not recorded, and get that, get that on for us in the next distribution. And then the, the other thing I had is regarding the delegation, seeing a lot of this with breweries as well, we're seeing these text amendments to existing zoning, specific to one property. And I, and I'd like to get a grasp on, on why that's the direction we're going, rather than not visiting the fact that, you know, maybe this, I don't know what the text amendment is back reads, but maybe it's appropriate to just, just do it for all of Gloucester, for example, rather than have to deal with two, three more of these text amendments like we're seeing with breweries. So I'm going to link this to the brewery issue, and that I would prefer to see us deal with the zonings correctly, at least as I perceive it, not doing these single-property text amendments. Maybe there's a way for us to avoid these, but maybe there's something I'm missing? So do we refer that to CPC, potentially? I'm not sure, but I'd like to understand more, what some of the rationale is for, for why we're pursuing individual property text amendments, rather than just adjusting our zoning.
So, Mr. Backham, just, you'll do, have staff do a memo to council, and if council wants to take that further, then they can. Okay, thank you. Council Long?
Thanks, your worship. In the distribution package of November twenty-ninth, there's a newsletter from the UDI, and it talks about Township of Langley fees and charges, taking a talks about Township of Langley fees and charges taking a rather substantial increase. I know that it also mentions in here that that'll be coming to council perhaps in the New Year, but I'm wondering, because there's some notices of motion already addressing cost of developers, if there's any kind of a figure that could be put towards what this DCC increase may entail for, for household development, and also, there's a doubling appears in the, well, because of land costs in the Greenway amenity policy. So, I know it's a mouthful, but it does, it does show up on the, on the UDI newsletter, which is item number ninety, on the, on the distribution list, so I think if we feel, if it, it appears that this is forecasting some substantial increases, you know, can we get a memo on, on that, or do we have to wait till the New Year?
Your worship, we can certainly give a memo, I'm just not certain on the timing and the background to it, is that the last update was a number of years ago, at that period of time, the land prices would have had a specific value, as would some of the raw materials, as we've seen in the last five or so years, there's been a significant increase in those values, and that's being reflected. We have consulted with UDI, so they're aware of some of the changes, they were going to be, I guess, significantly higher, but with their feedback, they were brought down to something that was more representative of what we thought was the area DCCs, and, and that, sorry, representative of DCCs in the area, with the result that now they are still competitive with other jurisdictions, but are going up by a significant percentage in terms of advising council as to what the specific percentage is. We can do so either through the memo, or concurrently with the introduction of the bylaws, but that's certainly coming, yes.
Well, maybe suffice, your worship, just to, just to give the council a heads-up that those fees are going to be coming, so it's something else that we need to consider. Thank you. Making decisions, thank you. Thank you. Is there any other business? See none, motion terminated. Counselor Davis moves termination, second by, who said, Counselor Kuntz, and all those in favor, opposed, Kerry, the meeting is now terminated, thank you very much.